Good evening. I'd like to welcome everyone to the February 12th, 2018 meeting of the Rutherford County Regional Planning Commission. If you would stand with us, please. Commissioner Pettis Reed will lead us in our prayer and our pledge. Pettis.
Good afternoon, gentlemen. I'm Mr. President. I'm Mr. Chairman. 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 I'm Mr. President. I'm Mr. Chairman.[268.82][268.82][S02. I'm Mr. President. I'm Mr. Chairman. I'm Mr. President. I'm Mr. Chairman. I'm Mr. President. I'm Mr. Chairman.[274.82][274.82][S02. I'm Mr. President. I'm Mr. Chairman.[276.82][276.82][S02. I'm Mr. President.[277.82][277.82][S02. I'm Mr. Chairman.[278.82][278.82][S02. I'm Mr. President.[279.82][279.82][S02. I'm Mr. Chairman.[280.82][280.82][S02. I'm Mr. President.[281.82][281.82][S02. I'm Mr. Chairman.[282.82][282.82][S02. I'm Mr. President.[283.82][283.82][S02. I'm Mr. Chairman.[284.82][284.82][S02. I'm Mr. President.[285.82][285.82][S02. I'm Mr. Chairman.[286.82][286.82][S02. I'm Mr. President.[287.82][287.82][S02. I'm Mr. Chairman.[288.82][288.82][S02. I'm Mr. President.[289.82][289.82][S02. I'm Mr. Chairman.[290.82][290.82][S02. I'm Mr. President.[291.82][291.82][S02. I'm Mr. Chairman.[292.82][292.82][S02. I'm Mr. President.[293.82][293.82][S02. I'm Mr. Chairman.[294.82][294.82][S02. I'm Mr. President.[295.82][295.82][S02. I'm Mr. Chairman.[296.82][296.82][S02. I'm Mr. President.[297.82][297.82][S02. I'm Mr. Chairman.[298.82][298.82][S02. I'm Mr. President.[299.82][299.82][S02. I'm Mr. Chairman.[300.82][300.82][S02. I'm Mr. President.[301.82][301.82][S02. I'm Mr. Chairman.[302.82][302.82][S02. I'm Mr. President.[303.82][303.82][S02. I'm Mr. Chairman.[304.82][304.82][S02. I'm Mr. President.[305.82][305.82][S02. I'm Mr. Chairman.[306.82][306.82][S02. I'm Mr. President.[307.82][307.82][S02. I'm Mr. Chairman.[308.82][308.82][S02. I'm Mr. President.[309.82][309.82][S02. I'm Mr. Chairman.[310.82][310.82][S02. I'm Mr. President.[311.82][311.82][S02. I'm Mr. Chairman.[312.82][312.82][S02. I'm Mr. President.[313.82][313.82][S02. I'm Mr. Chairman.[314.82][314.82][S02. I'm Mr. President.[315.82][315.82][S02. I'm Mr. Chairman.[316.82][316.82][S02. I'm Mr. President.[317.82][317.82][S02. I'm Mr. Chairman.[318.82][318.82][S02. I'm Mr. President.[319.82][319.82][S02. I'm Mr. Chairman.[320.82][320.82][S02. I'm Mr. President.[321.82][321.82][S02. I'm Mr. Chairman.[322.82][322.82][S02. I'm Mr. President.[323.82][323.82][S02. I'm Mr. Chairman.[324.82][324.82][S02. I'm Mr. President.[325.82][325.82][S02. I'm Mr. Chairman.[326.82][326.82][S02. I'm Mr. President.[327.82][327.82][S02. I'm Mr. Chairman.[328.82][328.82][S02. I'm Mr. President.[329.82][329.82][S02. I'm Mr. Chairman.[330.82][330.82][S02. I'm Mr. President.[331.82][331.82][S02. I'm Mr. Chairman.[332.82][332.82][S02. I'm Mr. President.[333.82][333.82][S02. I'm Mr. Chairman.[334.82][334.82][S02. I'm Mr. President.[335.82][335.82][S02. I'm Mr. Chairman.[336.82][336.82][S02. I'm Mr. President.[337.82][337.82][S02. I'm Mr. Chairman.[338.82][338.82][S02. I'm Mr. President.[339.82][339.82][S02. I'm Mr. Chairman.[340.82][340.82][S02. I'm Mr. President.[341.82][341.82][S02. I'm Mr. Chairman.[342.82][342.82][S02. I'm Mr. President.[343.82][343.82][S02. I'm Mr. Chairman.[344.82][344.82][S02. I'm Mr. President.[345.82][345.82][S02. I'm Mr. Chairman.[346.82][346.82][S02. I'm Mr. President.[347.82][347.82][S02. I'm Mr. Chairman.[348.82][348.82][S02. I'm Mr. President.[349.82][349.82][S02. I'm Mr. Chairman.[350.82][350.82][S02. I'm Mr. President.[351.82][351.82][S02. I'm Mr. Chairman.[352.82][352.82][S02. I'm Mr. President.[353.82][353.82][S02. I'm Mr. Chairman.[354.82][354.82][S02. I'm Mr. President.[355.82][355.82][S02. I'm Mr. Chairman.[356.82][356.82][S02. I'm Mr. President.[357.82][357.82][S02. I'm Mr. Chairman.[358.82][358.82][S02. I'm Mr. President.[359.82][359.82][S02. I'm Mr. Chairman.[360.82][360.82][S02. I'm Mr. President.[361.82][361.82][S02. I'm Mr. Chairman.[362.82][362.82][S02. I'm Mr. President.[363.82][363.82][S02. I'm Mr. Chairman.[364.82][364.82][S02. I'm Mr. President.[365.82][365.82][S02. I'm Mr. Chairman.[366.82][366.82][S02. I'm Mr. President.[367.82][367.82][S02. I'm Mr. Chairman.[368.82][368.82][S02. I'm Mr. President.[369.82][369.82][S02. I'm Mr. Chairman.[370.82][370.82][S02. I'm Mr. President.[371.82][371.82][S02. I'm Mr. Chairman.[372.82][372.82][S02. I'm Mr. President.[373.82][373.82][S02. I'm Mr. Chairman.[374.82][374.82][S02. I'm Mr. President.[375.82][375.82][S02. I'm Mr. Chairman.[376.82][376.82][S02. I'm Mr. President.[377.82][377.82][S02. I'm Mr. Chairman.[378.82][378.82][S02. I'm Mr. President.[379.82][379.82][S02. I'm Mr. Chairman.[380.82][380.82][S02. I'm Mr. President.[381.82][381.82][S02. I'm Mr. Chairman.[382.82][382.82][S02. I'm Mr. President.[383.82][383.82][S02. I'm Mr. Chairman.[384.82][384.82][S02. I'm Mr. President.[385.82][385.82][S02. I'm Mr. Chairman.[386.82][386.82][S02. I'm Mr. President.[387.82][387.82][S02. I'm Mr. Chairman.[388.82][388.82][S02. I'm Mr. President.[389.82][389.82][S02. I'm Mr. Chairman.[390.82][390.82][S02. I'm Mr. President.[391.82][391.82][S02. I'm Mr. Chairman.[392.82][392.82][S02. I'm Mr. President.[393.82][393.82][S02. I'm Mr. Chairman.[394.82][394.82][S02. I'm Mr. President.[395.82][395.82][S02. I'm Mr. Chairman.[396.82][396.82][S02. I'm Mr. President.[397.82][397.82][S02. I'm Mr. Chairman.[398.82][398.82][S02. I'm Mr. President.[399.82][399.82][S02. I'm Mr. Chairman.[400.82][400.82][S02. I'm Mr. President.[401.82][401.82][S02. I'm Mr. Chairman.[402.82][402.82][S02. I'm Mr. President.[403.82][403.82][S02. I'm Mr. Chairman.[404.82][404.82][S02. I'm Mr. President.[405.82][405.82][S02. I'm Mr. Chairman.[406.82][406.82][S02. I'm Mr. President.[407.82][407.82][S02. I'm Mr. Chairman.[408.82][408.82][S02. I'm Mr. President.[409.82][409.82][S02. I'm Mr. Chairman.[410.82][410.82][S02. I'm Mr. President.[411.82][411.82][S02. I'm Mr. Chairman.[412.82][412.82][S02. I'm Mr. President.[413.82][413.82][S02. I'm Mr. Chairman.[414.82][414.82][S02. I'm Mr. President.[415.82][415.82][S02. I'm Mr. Chairman.[416.82][416.82][S02. I'm Mr. President.[417.82][417.82][S02. I'm Mr. Chairman.[418.82][418.82][S02. I'm Mr. President.[419.82][419.82][S02. I'm Mr. Chairman.[420.82][420.82][S02. I'm Mr. President.[421.82][421.82][S02. I'm Mr. Chairman.[422.82][422.82][S02. I'm Mr. President.[423.82][423.82][S02. I'm Mr. Chairman.[424.82][424.82][S02. I'm Mr. President.[425.82][425.82][S02. I'm Mr. Chairman.[426.82][426.82][S02. I'm Mr. President.[427.82][427.82][S02. I'm Mr. Chairman.[428.82][428.82][S02. I'm Mr. President.[429.82][429.82][S02. I'm Mr. Chairman.[430.82][430.82][S02. I'm Mr. President.[431.82][431.82][S02. I'm Mr. Chairman.[432.82][432.82][S02. I'm Mr. President.[433.82][433.82][S02. I'm Mr. Chairman.[434.82][434.82][S02. I'm Mr. President.[435.82][435.82][S02. I'm Mr. Chairman.[436.82][436.82][S02. I'm Mr. President.[437.82][437.82][S02. I'm Mr. Chairman.[438.82][438.82][S02. I'm Mr. President.[439.82][439.82][S02. I'm Mr. Chairman.[440.82][440.82][S02. I'm Mr. President.[441.82][441.82][S02. I'm Mr. Chairman.[442.82][442.82][S02. I'm Mr. President.[443.82][443.82][S02. I'm Mr. Chairman.[444.82][444.82][S02. I'm Mr. President.[445.82][445.82][S02. I'm Mr. Chairman.[446.82][446.82][S02. I'm Mr. President.[447.82][447.82][S02. I'm Mr. Chairman.[448.82][448.82][S02. I'm Mr. President.[449.82][449.82][S02. I'm Mr. Chairman.[450.82][450.82][S02. I'm Mr. President.[451.82][451.82][S02. I'm Mr. Chairman.[452.82][452.82][S02. I'm Mr. President.[453.82][453.82][S02. I'm Mr. Chairman.[454.82][454.82][S02. I'm Mr. President.[455.82][455.82][S02. I'm Mr. Chairman.[456.82][456.82][S02. I'm Mr. President.[457.82][457.82][S02. I'm Mr. Chairman.[458.82][458.82][S02. I'm Mr. President.[459.82][459.82][S02. I'm Mr. Chairman.[460.82][460.82][S02. I'm Mr. President.[461.82][461.82][S02. I'm Mr. Chairman.[462.82][462.82][S02. I'm Mr. President.[463.82][463.82][S02. I'm Mr. Chairman. I make a motion to approve with all staff comments.
I have a motion and a second to approve item 18-1002, Joseph and Betty Sarsfield Minor Subdivision. All those in favor of that motion to approve, please say aye. Is there any opposition? That motion to approve carries. Thank you. Now we'll get back to our regular agenda. Item 6B now becomes item 6C. Item 6C, these are rezoning requests that are scheduled for public hearings. 6C1, item number 18-A001, John Elliott for Front Street Partners. Location is Elam Road. Commission district is 18. The county commissioner is Alan McAdoo. The size of the site is approximately 3 1/2 acres. Tax map 126. The existing zoning is RM, residential medium density. Proposed zoning is CS for commercial services. Doug.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. As you recall, this particular item was deferred from last month's planning commission meeting. Unfortunately, the applicant had a little confusion as far as what the time of the meeting was. Got here just a little bit late. He actually walked in right as we were getting done with that, moving on to the next item. But there are a couple representatives here tonight for this request. The applicant, just for review, is proposing to rezone the property in order to locate the headquarters for their construction company, Southern Building Group. The applicant has submitted a concept plan and proposed interior drawings that have been included with your agenda packets. You can see those on your iPads. Additional information provided by the applicant does indicate that there may be limited outdoor storage of construction equipment, but not immediately. Of course, if that were the case, any outdoor storage of equipment would have to be properly screened, consistent with our regulations. There's actually some additional information in here on the site layout and building design, more than what was in the last agenda. They did provide some additional documents to put in the agenda, so those have been included. Again, there is an existing billboard on the property, which will remain as a legally established, nonconforming use. Access would be and continue to be from Elam Road. Of course, any new accessways, parking areas, et cetera, would have to be developed to county specifications, as well as landscaping. And of course, our performance standards would also apply to this site. Staff recommendation originally, and still is, for approval of this particular request. This area has changed considerably since the interchange at I-24 and Joby Jackson was built. We believe that this property is probably not reasonable to expect that this will develop in a residential manner. So, we do recommend approval. We think it's consistent with the comprehensive plan. Now that being said, there were several people here, as you recall, that did have comments during our public hearing last month regarding the traffic of the area. There were some questions, I know, regarding that, and the applicant should, are here again, that can help answer some of those questions. So with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions that the commission may have at this point.
Questions for staff at this time? Rhonda.
Doug, this is the parcel that last time the neighbors were saying that they already had other commercial traffic going through their neighborhood. Is that right?
I believe that's correct. Yes, ma'am.
What do we do to mitigate that?
Well, if I remember, we had some discussion, Greg was here, Greg Brooks was here, and we had some discussion about the road, as far as can you really limit that kind of traffic on the road? And, correct me, Mike, if I'm wrong, but as I recall the conversation, Greg didn't really think that there was a whole lot that we really could do, if you recall that.
Technically, there's no way to limit a public right-of-way, the traffic that travels across it. He has the ability to restrict the weight of a vehicle crossing a bridge, or something like that, if it's not adequate. But as far as restricting what traffic can travel down a public right-of-way, we don't have any ability to do that.
So there's no authority from the sheriff's office or anybody to help eliminate that?
Not that I'm aware of, no.
Are there any planning options of things that, and it would be difficult, I guess, to do now, but like in future design for that neighborhood, if they had included things that we've talked about in the past that would slow down traffic roundabouts, or, you know, other things to sort of eliminate that opportunity? So it makes it less desirable for that commercial traffic to go through there? Is there anything that we can factor into this, because of where this property is, that's really not going to be the case?
Now, I'll just say this, I'm not a traffic engineer, but just looking at the proximity of where it is to the intersection there at Joby Jackson, I think it would be difficult. Plus, to get the right-of-way for something like that, you'd have to get the right-of-way across the street, and also this. Now, this is on the county's, I'm sorry, the city's major transportation plan update that they just completed last year. They're showing this, I believe, as a three-lane, yes, a three-lane section. It's not depicted on the county's long-range plan, but of course, that's something that we're starting to work on, is a possible proposal for that. But unfortunately, nothing immediate coming down the pipe for that.
But it might be something that staff just needs to be mindful of as future subdivisions come in, where we know they're going to be budding up to potentially blooming, you know...
Right. Well, and that being said, too, I think it's fair to say that the development that we're seeing, especially right around that, right across the street from the property, those, as you can see on the map on the screen, in that yellow shade, those are all within the city limits of Murfreesboro. The county really hasn't approved any neighborhoods out in this area in quite some time that I can recall. There was a rezoning for property right to the north of this at one time that was going to be a mini-storage, something like that, an office. And that was several years ago. We actually even saw a site plan, but nothing's ever, nothing's ever come of that. So a lot of that, and that other residential development right to the north of that, that Mike circling right there, that's also a city development.
Doug, that's the neighborhood you're referring to, that's farther down Elam Road? What's the purpose of the trucks going through the neighborhood? What's the shortcut? Where are they going?
Well, it might be, and I'm not positive, I'm wondering if it's not people coming from the north heading down to the south, because in my mind, it wouldn't make a whole lot of sense to turn, try to turn left on the Manchester Highway, because I know that's not an easy turn to make. So I'm wondering if it's not the traffic coming the other way, going south to get to the interstate, and just rather than go down Manchester Highway to get to Joby Jackson and over, they hit Elam Road to go down, and they're closer to the intersection, it's more of a straight path if they were to do that. That'd be my guess as to what's going on. Anytime you see commercial, like, commercial services up against a residential area, RM zoning, RL zoning, we have three levels of buffer, type 1, 2, and 3. Type 2 is kind of the middle of the road buffer, that's what this would require. It'd be a minimum of 30 feet of buffer unless they were to put some sort of a solid visual screen, like a fence, you know, wooden privacy fence, wall, berm, something like that. At that point, they could reduce the width to 15 feet. And now plantings are still required, regardless of which way you go with that. You don't have to have as many plantings if you have a solid visual screen like a fence. But if you don't do a fence, there's more plantings, trees and shrubs required. Then it's your question. Or 15, minimum 15. Inside of the buffer? It doesn't really matter, either way.
Doug, has a traffic study been done, or is it, does this trigger a traffic study that would be needed for that area?
We haven't seen it, right, we haven't, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I was just saying, we know that traffic was the big issue for those neighbors out there.
Yeah, we haven't done a traffic study on this. Typically, just the rezoning, although the regulations do allow for that ability, usually when it comes to a rezoning like this, where it could be multiple uses, we wouldn't require any kind of a traffic study until we saw specifically what the use was. Even though they're proposing a construction company, which is probably more limited traffic, we'd probably wait until we saw a site plan to determine if one was required or not, just because if their plans change, they sell to somebody else who wants to do a mini-market or something like that, that might change things, because there'd be a lot more in-and-out traffic for something like that than there would be for just an office for a construction company.
I just really want us to be as smart as possible on the front end with this, and so that's why I'm looking for any avenue to help mitigate adding to traffic issues out there. Because we know, as a region, we're struggling with traffic issues. So if there's anything that we can do as planners to prevent that or mitigate a situation, I'm just, I'm wide open to any ideas that you guys have as the professionals to sort of guide us through that, because I wouldn't want commercial traffic going through my neighborhood, and I wouldn't want a new development being approved that I know is going to, you know, exacerbate an already existing problem. So that's just what I'm looking for.
Doug, question. This is currently zoned RM, correct?
That's correct.
If, if, this is a big if, if you left it at RM, what would the development options be in terms of housing? And I'm asking this question is, because I'm trying to figure out what potential traffic impact you would have on this property from a residential standpoint.
Yes, sir. The property is about 3 1/2 acres in size. Now, I'm going to speak just from a, you know, maximum development ability as far as gross density is concerned. Zoned RM, residential medium density, you can have roughly three units to the acre, or maybe it goes out to like 2.9. So if you use three to the acre, you're looking at about nine, 10 houses, roughly, is what you're looking at in that area. Now, that's assuming, of course, you know, your soils are good. That's in a perfect world-type scenario. I doubt you'd really get that many. Typically, what you see for a single-family development, traffic in and out every day is about somewhere around nine and a half, 10 trips, vehicle trips per day for one single-family resident. That, any trip is counted, whether they're coming or going. So if they leave in the morning, that's one, they come back for lunch, two, they leave again, three, that's essentially how that works. So you can average roughly about nine and a half to 10 vehicle trips per day for each residential house. So again, using gross density numbers, you know, roughly nine to 10 units-ish, and then about 10 trips a day, you're looking at about, you know, 90 to 100 trips. Again, that's, you know, perfect world, gross density, maximum, everything.
At this time, I'll declare a public hearing open for item 18-A001, John Elliott. Is Mr. Elliott here? If one of you or both of you would come forward, please, and give us a brief overview of what you're planning. If you would, state your name and address for the record.
Chad Davenport, 322 North Front Street, Murfreesboro. I'm with Southern Building Group. I'm partners with Mr. Elliott, who couldn't be here tonight. But our, to address the construction company concern, this is going to be an office for professional services. I mean, we're not going to have, you know, equipment parked in the yard, dump trucks, bulldozers. We have estimators, project managers, in-house accounting people, contract administration people. And really, at full capacity in this building, we're only going to be running maybe 16 people. And probably on an average day, we're looking at 12 employees at this location.
Anyone have any questions for Mr. Davenport?
The proposal, it said that there could potentially be some outside storage of construction equipment at some point.
It would, it would probably be for some materials, but it would all be enclosed, and we would do it in a, we would do it in a means that matches the architecture of the construction company we're proposing. I think in your packet you have, we have, it's kind of an isometric drawing of the building, and then we have some elevations. So it's a, it's a, it's going to be a pretty nice-looking building. We're not going to just stick a...
That part, yeah. No, that part definitely looked nice, and I appreciate your thought in including that in the packet. Now, I was reading from the summary that was provided to us by staff, and it said that there could be limited outdoor storage of construction equipment, and so that's why I was asking what your intention is.
That should say probably materials. If it's equipment, it's going to be things like maybe bobcats, you know, that we can pull indoors and lock up, but it would be, it would be a completely enclosed area.
Were you able to view the meeting last month to hear any of the neighbors' concerns?
I didn't, I didn't get a chance to do that before I came to my...
Talked to any of them? Have you heard from any of them directly?
We haven't directly.
Thank you, Mr. Davenport.
Thank you.
Anyone else wish to speak for or against this rezoning request?
Evening. I'm Diane Parker. I live in the Reedhurst neighborhood, 2101 Wimbledon Drive, which is off Elam Road. And again, we're not opposed to growth, but we really would just like you to go out to Elam Road, rush hour traffic, and take a look at the surroundings that are in our neighborhood. Because on either end of Manchester Highway or Joby, in the morning and the afternoon, you cannot get out. There's no traffic light. It backs up, coming, people coming from Manchester Highway in town, and then Joby backs up, because now they've added the extension on Church Street, so you get the traffic coming from that way, and then you get traffic coming on Joby from Manchester Highway. It's impossible to navigate. We just would like a traffic study done, and also road improvements before you approve this rezoning. Elam Road is a country road that basically has been built over time now to be a cut-through, a major cut-through from Manchester Highway to the Joby interchange. There's many, many cars that travel it every day. It's a narrow road. It has no shoulder. It has a drop-off onto the embankment. The creek can flood. Don't know what creek it is, Lidle Creek. It can flood at times. It's just, it's a neighborhood, you know, that you've got houses in Reedhurst neighborhood that have Leland, Reedhurst, Wimbledon, and Tulip Hill. You built eight houses on Elam Road, and then there's the Summersby neighborhood that has, I don't know how many houses, and there's two entrances. So it is a neighborhood street that we just don't want heavy construction. When you're talking about delivering materials, that's going to require 18-wheelers, I'm in transportation, so it's going to require truck traffic. Again, we're not opposed to growth, just take a look at, go out there and take a look at the area during rush hour, and see what we see every day. If we could get lights at either end, or if we could widen the road to three lanes before this is approved, that would, that would be wonderful. But as it is right now, it doesn't sustain adding any more, any business. We've already got the apartments, we've got new houses that are being built. It's just already over-traveled. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Joanne Plow. I live at 2232 Elam Road. The statement where there's been nothing new that has been built there, I've only lived there two years. The eight houses are literally right on Elam Road. They have a very short driveway. Summersby's Development, there are multiple houses that have been built in the two years I've been there. Then you have the townhouses that were built right off of Joby Jackson to the right when you turn onto Elam Road, and they're expanding that. So there is more residential that is coming up all the time on Elam Road. All hours, the traffic on Elam Road is unbearable. The fear of our dog running out, and they don't do the speed limit, the traffic is unbelievable. My fear is the company that's stating that it's going to be an office building with some storage, and yes, the 18-wheelers coming and bringing supplies. If that gets zoned commercial, what about the lot next door to it? What if that changes that area and it all becomes commercial? You have commercial in a residential area. My house was built in the 50s. Then you have all the new housing and Summersby's Development, all the people that live there. We can't get in and out of our own houses. It is a two-lane country road. That's why we are where we are. It's residential. I've seen this before. If you turn a portion into commercial, are you going to turn the next one, the lot next to it? Where I saw surveyors two weeks ago, and I don't know why there's surveyors out there. If nothing's been decided, why are there surveyors? But anyway, if you take the next lot and that becomes commercial, the traffic has increased because Amazon and other companies are on Joby Jackson, and they use our road as a throughway. And I'm telling you, when we're sitting there, after I come home from work and having a cup of coffee, it's Grand Central Station. And that's my biggest fear. I didn't move to be on Grand Central Station. And the more, other than residents, you make it commercial, it's just a fear we have, of it's just going to get worse. Thank you.
My name's Russell Wright. I live at 2338 Reedhurst, which is one of the streets off Elam Road. And I'm hoping that in some coherent way I can answer some of the questions... And, uh, I'm hoping that, uh, in some coherent way, I can answer some of the questions that have been raised about the traffic and some of the issues out there. Part of the problem with the semi-traffic is the proximity of the entrance ramp to I twenty-four west. Um, when trucks are coming down Joby Jackson and listening to their, uh, navigation devices, they say, "Turn now." And because there's only a few feet between where Elam Road turns right and where you turn right to get on the interstate, uh, a lot of the trucks get in there by accident. And that, that brings them to driving through our yards, knocking down our mailboxes. Mine's been knocked down before by semis. Uh, there is a yard on the corner of, um, Lee Lane and Crossfield now that has trenches across the yard where a semi could, got in there and couldn't turn, so he drove through a yard, and there are trenches from, from truck traffic. That's part of the problem. Uh, also, it's a shortcut. And it all goes back to a long time ago when Joby Jackson was proposed. The neighborhood of that, that community, that, that entire community met, and we asked not to be connected to Joby Jackson. Uh, because we knew that this problem was gonna come up, uh, our requests were ignored and possibly, from what I hear, overruled by an influential citizen who lives on the other section of Elam Road. I also want to address the, the discussion that we had last time about the, the road commissioner said that he could not limit tractor-trailers on that road. Now, I've had some dealings with the road commissioner. He's an honorable man, and I don't, am not impugning him in any way. However, there are some big discrepancies about what he is telling you. Number one, the, the south section of Elam Road, where it connects to Joby Jackson, is clearly marked "No Tractor Trailers." There's a sign with a picture of a tractor trailer, the circle and the red X. We had no tractor trailer signs on our section of Elam Road, and we didn't have nearly the problem that we have. Now, he's telling you all that he can't limit that. But if that's the case, how does he limit it on the other section of Elam Road, which I, I just have to say, to be honest, it goes past an influential member of the community's house. So there, there's, there's something going on here about whether or not he can say that no tractor trailers, because the other section of Elam Road is clearly marked "No Tractor Trailers." And ours had that at one time, and they were changed, and now we have problems. If he's here, he might, he, maybe he can give you a better, uh, description of why. If he does, I believe he's gonna say it's because of a bridge that goes over, uh, I believe it's the, the Stones River runs out there, and there's a low-water bridge out there. Well, if, if that's his rationale, there's also a bridge on our section of Elam Road that also is not built for tractor-trailer weight. Uh, it's an old bridge. It's been there since Elam Road was built. There's no way that it's built to support tractor-trailer weight. Uh, when I asked him about that, he said that there, that it's too much trouble to have that bridge rated for weight capacity. So basically, they just don't wanna do it. So I'm asking for someone to, in his, in his kind and his, and his, and his, as, as nice a way as I can, to ask him why can he allow, or can he not allow tractor-trailer traffic on one section of Elam Road, but tell us we have to have it. As far as the traffic on that road, the traffic studies that have been done will show that the average speed on Elam, Elam Road is forty-eight miles an hour. Now, the speed limit is forty. So we're all smart enough to know how averages work. For every car that's going forty miles an hour, there has to be one that's going fifty-four. That's how averages work. Um, the, the new houses that were built along Elam Road are very little further off the road than that wall from where I'm standing. They are very close to the road. So if you three-lane that road, or four-lane it, and I know the plan is three lanes, but if you three-lane that road, you're gonna have a dangerous situation of a child could step out of a door, and you're gonna have almost interstates, you know, when I was growing up, the interstate speed was fifty-five miles an hour. You've got fifty-five mile-an-hour traffic that close to the front door of a house. So there, there's simply gonna have to be some address of the traffic, the speed of traffic, and there's gonna have to be some consideration to think that you're gonna be able to widen that road to three lanes without creating, uh, safety issues with proximity to the houses on both sides. That's just not gonna work. The, it, that's, that's just not a, a reasonable way to plan anything. So I'm asking that you, that you, you have the power to ask questions that, and get answers that we don't have. And I'm just asking that you would please do that for the sake of our neighborhood, because that's what we would like to keep, is a neighborhood. And, uh, fifty-five mile-an-hour traffic that close to a house, that just simply does not make a neighborhood. Thank you.
Wait just a second. You've had your turn. What, what, you, I'll get, I'll just come back up if no one else wants to speak. Anyone else? Seeing no one, Mr. Davenport, you're up.
Sorry about that.
It's okay. I'm sorry about that.
I just want to address, uh, one more time, uh, the concern about the semi-traffic. Uh, just to illustrate the point, our, our current construction projects are located in Fayetteville, Arkansas, College Station, Texas, Kingsport, Tennessee. Uh, we're getting ready to start one up in Knoxville, Tennessee. And we do have one going down in Smyrna, off the interstate, uh, near Sam Ridley. Uh, we're not, there won't ever be workmen or materials, uh, coming in and out of that site normally. When I was, when we're talking about storage, we're talking about, you know, at the end of the job, if we've got ten spools of wire left, you know, we bring them there and store them until we can vet them out on another job. Uh, just wanted to kind of speak to that, that point.
Anyone else wishing to speak? Seeing no one, I'll declare the public hearing closed. Commissioners? Doug, do you have, as a staff, does have a recommendation?
Our staff report, we did recommend approval of this. Yes, sir.
Okay.
I have a question, uh, to staff mentally. Doug and Mike, in regards to traffic lights in some, that are needed in some key areas, i- is that a T-dot function, or is that a City of Murphysboro function?
That location right there, the intersection itself is within the county's jurisdiction. The city did not, uh, annex that portion. You can see right there on the map that Mike's kind of outlining. The yellow is the city limits. Um, so they did not annex the right-of-way with those developments right along there. Now, being it's that close to the interstate intersection there, the interchange, yeah, T-dot would probably be involved in some capacity, I would think.
If I, if I heard you correctly, w- we would have the biggest say in terms of trying to propagate a light right there?
When, when they study the widening of Elam Road, they'll do a warrant analysis, and they'll see, uh, if a tra- traffic signal is warranted there, and that, and most likely it will be because of the traffic patterns, the current traffic patterns.
So that was not part of the traffic study that was done on Elam that was referenced a minute ago? I, I thought one of the, in the public hearing, somebody addressed a, a traffic study that was done.
If there was some sort of a traffic study done when that, uh, when Elam Road was rerouted the way it was, I haven't personally seen it. Uh, but I, I think Mike is correct when he says that, uh, you know, at the time, they probably wouldn't have warranted any kind of a traffic signal anyway. Uh, now, if you were to specifically study the warrants analysis now, I mean, you might come up with something different based on the development that's happened out there, even without this particular property.
So it has been some time since a traffic study has been done in that area?
I think that's safe to say. Yes, sir.
Well, well before the expansion of Amazon and all this commercial growth out there.
I, I can't get any more specific than that, just because I, I honestly don't know.
I guess the next follow-up question would be, is there one plan for this area, or are we basically just kind of waiting for T-dot to come along in their long-range plan for the expansion of this intersection?
Well, I would think that when, right now, again, it's on the city's long-range thoroughfare plan. Uh, this may be something we would also look at, at the county's long-range plan when we get to that point. Um, at that point, I would think you'd probably be a shorter time waiting for either the city or the county to look at some sort of a comprehensive study of that intersection as opposed to waiting for T-dot to do it. Is that fair statement, Lee?
You know if it's on the city's calendar for, for review?
I have the schedule in front of me. They have a, uh, a long, medium, and short-range, uh, calendar, and then they have projects that are already funded and, and on the books. Oh, and the total poll, you know, that it was gonna get looked at pretty quick as a short.
Okay.
Doug, what's across, what's to the east of that across Elam Road? Is multi, is city multifamily, correct?
That's multifamily right across the street. Yes, sir.
It's served by sewer, so...
That's correct.
Hey, there's nothing, I mean, theoretically, we could ask for annexation here and put in a rezon, and then in the city, and put multifamily across the, the road there.
Well, they, they could ask for annexation for their office, for any other type of development that, I mean, similar to what they're doing right now. Yes, they could.
And they could ask for a rezon and then put a lot of apartments on this spot.
Potentially, yeah. If it's approved.
Probably generate more traffic that-a-way.
More than like that, multifamily development, just depending on the number of units, you know, again, would probably have, you know, we use, you know, nine-and-a-half, ten as a kind of a general for single-family. Multifamily is a little bit different, a little less, but of course, you have more units at the same time, so.
Would there have possibly been a traffic study associated with that multifamily or the subdivision north of there?
Possibly. It would have been done with the city, right? We would have to check with the city.
We might could look at or look into. Also, I'm thinking there would have been right-of-way probably dedicated for the three-lane section along with those developments would...
Well, it looks like it's, yeah, I mean, it looks like it's pretty wide right through there. Now, my guess is that was all probably done as part of the interchange project. I don't think that necessarily was done as part of those developments, but you can kind of see where, where Mike's highlighting right there, we're kind of next down. But they've got quite a bit of right-of-way already through there, so, I mean, just looking at that, my guess is those developments that came through probably didn't have to dedicate anything because it was already there.
Mike, couldn't this gentleman come to the road board meeting that has some concerns, and he does have some concerns about the signage, and, and couldn't he meet with the road board and get some answers to his questions?
Absolutely. He doesn't have to go to the road board meeting. He could talk to Greg, uh, directly. And, and I don't want to speak for Greg, but I think what Greg was trying to say, they put no truck signs down here to deter trucks from turning too soon on Elam Road, uh, to let them know that, hey, this isn't where you need to turn, you need to go down a little bit to the interstate. I think that's what he was trying to say. But he, by law, I don't think he has the ability to, to say, "No, you can't use this road at all." Yeah, but when, when this apartment complex, when this land was annexed by the city, this was one of those, wow, I wish they would have taken this. Uh, the, the highway department, uh, came in and put a dedicated right-left turn lane down here, try to help the flow of traffic, because, um, one person trying to turn left out of here would back the road up even worse than it is now. So now they have a lot of room to, to queue up to turn left and, and still allow a lot of traffic to turn right out of here. And now, now working with the city, this was, uh, a little early on for me, but now when we get an annexation request, we look at what the city's doing and saying, "Hey, this is probably one of those places where you need to annex this road."
And also, just to kind of piggyback on what he was saying, their philosophy on that, for Murphysboro City at least, has really changed. Most of the annexation requests, if not all of them that we see anymore, include the right-of-way in front of the projects, 'cause they understand and they realize that they're creating impact to the road that, you know, the county's not creating based on that. So they, they realize that, and they've really kind of shifted their thinking in that regard.
Well, I mean, it'd be great if the city'd take it over, but all, for these poor people that live there, all we're doing is moving the puddle. Um, I, I had the pleasure of driving that area a week or two ago, about four o'clock in the afternoon, and these people are right. I mean, it takes forever and ever to try and merge onto Joby Jackson or to Elam. And you sit through many, uh, traffic lights down the street in order to try and get a gap to get on, and then it is, you hit the gas and hope that you can squeeze in. It is a dangerous spot right there. Or, it's not a dangerous spot, there are multiple spots of danger in that series of intersections right there. So I, I agree with these people that this is a bad problem. What it sounds like is there's no real study that's recent to help educate us on what to do. So it also sounds like there's no short-term plan to do any capital, capital improvements. So that is the gist of that. Now, on the planning side, we've got a piece of property that is suitable for this particular rezoning application and has a fairly low impact compared to a residential piece of property, and is mostly gonna be cars and pickups, 'cause it's an executive office. And rarely would there be tractor-trailer, if at all, other than bringing supplies back at the end of the project. So I'm not so concerned about that. So from a planning standpoint, they've got every right for us to vote affirmative to approve his request. The dilemma is, you know, in reality, you ought to halt, halt growth right here because the traffic can't keep up with it. So you're in a catch-twenty-two. Um, so the, you know, the question is, are, are a dozen to sixteen more cars gonna make a difference? And you, you know, you approve this, but then you gotta ask yourself, when do you stop? 'Cause i- it is bad. These people are right. This is bad. And if, if, I would challenge any of the people on the planning commission to take a drive in the mornings or afternoons, even trying to get off I twenty-four exit ramp and turn left or right onto Joby Jackson, you'll sit there for ten minutes. Um, so this, this is a really tough one. So this, this is a really tough one. So here, I guess here's what I'm gonna do. From a planning standpoint, I'm gonna make a motion to approve this request for zoning, based on staff comments. But I, I guess to staff, I'm also gonna make a plea that can we meet with the city and try and sit down with them, or their traffic engineer, and get a real hard look at a calendar, and try and figure out what we can do, either through approving some money for some lights, or, you know, a, anything, anything's gonna help, because if we wait for T-Dot or wait for the city to do a long-range plan, that's too long. I think these people would take anything at this point to help, A, improve the safety and improve the traffic flow, but a couple of lights, or at least a light, would help, and I think we owe it to joint venture with the city a little bit to see what we can do and, and try and accelerate some kind of a study or a, a pattern of traffic, so that would be my request. So, A, I've made a motion to approve, and B, I would like to get a task group together to look at this area, because this isn't the first time we've heard about this area being a problem, so that's my opinion.
I'll, I'll second Mike's motion, I was gonna say about the same thing. These people in this area, between Joby Jackson and Manchester Highway, it, it would appear to me they need a light on one end, or the other, or both, and I would appreciate if staff contact city and see, see if we can't get something going for them. But I'm, I'm gonna second the motion, because I don't see any difference between 16, 18 employees a day, weekdays, and annexation from someone that wanted to build apartments across the road, probably less traffic that a way, and I, the, I think the buffering will, and the concept picture of their building looks, looks nice, so I'll, I'll second that and request that staff make a contact there.
We have a motion and a second to approve item 18-A001 for John Elliott. Any other questions?
How close is that? Is that about 600, 500, 600 feet between the ramp intersection and that intersection, just guessing?
Peter's gotta catch up.
Uh-oh, I asked too much of it.
I guess what I'm looking at is it's close enough that I would almost include T-Dot in talks on that, just...
Oh, absolutely, yeah.
Because those signals, that intersection being that close, you want to find out.
Right. When, like Doug mentioned before, it's 489 feet, so almost 500 feet. When we see a site plan come in with a particular use, we'll say, yes, a traffic study is needed or one's not. If we see one, you know, if we said, okay, we need a traffic study on this, what is the impact of this development on the traffic right now at this intersection down at Joby Jackson and Elam Road, and then maybe farther up in the next intersection up? So, you know, would that say, okay, that's gonna kick it into a needing warrant and a traffic signal? I wouldn't think so, but this is probably already needing a, a traffic signal right now, but are we gonna make this, this outfit build a traffic, you know, pay $250,000 for? So, that's something, I mean, Mike's got a valid point, we need to talk with the city and T-Dot as well.
I'd coordinate that as, that section. There's a lot of intersections right there that look like there's a lot of turning movements going on on a multi-lane highway that, I don't know which ones warrant the signals, but it looks like more of a little segment study or something there.
Ready to vote? We have a motion and a second to approve 18-A001. All who's in favor of that motion to approve, please say aye. Any opposition? The motion to approve carries, thank you. Doug, if you would, when you get the chance, follow up with the commission on contact with the city and how fruitful those, that contact is. Thank you.
Sir.
Item 6C2, item number is 18-A004, Virginia Diane McCord, location 2348 West Jefferson Pike, commission district is two, the county commissioner is Steve Piercy. Size of the site is approximately 20 acres, only three are scheduled to be rezoned, tax map 25, existing zoning is RM, residential medium density, proposed zoning is CS, commercial services. Doug?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. As you stated, this property is located along...
If you would, let me...
Sorry.
If you would, please, that rezoning request that was just approved is scheduled to be heard before the full county commission with a public hearing on Thursday, March the 15th, at 6:30 PM in this room, okay? I'm sorry.
Oh, you're fine, thank you. As was stated, this property is located at the intersection of West Jefferson Pike and Powell's Chapel Road. You can see either on the maps in your agenda packets or on the map on the screen right now, Mike's got it highlighted right there on the property. You see that shaded blue right to the east of that with the IN designation on it, that's institutional zoning, that's the location of Wilson Elementary School. It's actually, you can't see the school in that picture, it's a little further to the north, but that's the, basically the location that we are talking about. The applicant has indicated that they're interested in rezoning just a portion of this property, as you can see in the maps located in your agenda materials, about three acres at the intersection of Powell's Chapel Road and West Jefferson Pike. The remaining 17 acres would remain zoned as residential medium-density RM, what it's currently zoned right now. There is a letter submitted with your agenda packets from the applicant that kind of explains their intentions. No specific use, no concept plan at this time, really, that's, it's kind of open as to the uses that they would contemplate in this area. As you can see, the closest non-residential zoning is immediately to the east, again, that's the location of the Wilson Elementary School. Closest commercial zoning is approximately one mile to the northwest at the intersection of West Jefferson Pike and Mona Road, and about one and a quarter mile to the southeast along West Jefferson Pike, if you were to zoom out, which, Mike, you don't have to zoom out for that. The existing house on the property currently does have access to West Jefferson Pike. Should this application be approved, an engineered site plan would be required, would have to go through planning commission review as well. Any new access points would require, along West Jefferson Pike at least, would require T-Dot approval, being that West Jefferson Pike is a state road. Landscaping, access, parking, all these other things, again, would have to be built to county standards, current county standards, performance standards also for noise, dust, lighting, glare, those kind of things would also apply to this property. We have also on your iPads, and I think there, there is somebody in the audience that will probably go into more detail with these, there are several pictures that were submitted that you'll see, I know they had some, some concerns about that, I'm sure he'll, he'll get to that. We also had some concerns from staff standpoint about the drainage of this property. When you look in your agenda packets, there is a map that we did with the 2010 aerial footage from the 2010 flood back in May of 2010. This area, right around this area where they are talking about rezoning, was impacted as far as there was a lot of standing water in that area, and you can see from those photos, I believe, that there was some standing water over the, the road at West Jefferson Pike as well. So, we really have mixed feelings on this application. Of course, there are several factors that would support rezoning. Again, this, it is adjacent to non-residential zoning, it is institutional zoning, is the location of the school, but it does, adjacent to that. Property is also located along an urban corridor as identified by our comprehensive plan. West Jefferson Pike is scheduled to be widened at some point in the future to five lanes. Being this is a state road, again, that would have to be up to T-Dot's timing, a lot of that. Right now, most of what T-Dot is working on really is from 840 back towards Smyrna, so this part of it, West Jefferson Pike, really, as far as we know, really, there are no plans for any imminent widening of this section of the road. That being said, there is no commercial zoning in this area, as, other than the, the one immediately next door, and there are known drainage issues, you can see on the map that Mike has up right now, that's from the 2010 aerial footage, and you can see that area in the corner where they were, they're proposing to rezone is, was, was holding water at that time. That area, the whole property is within the 500-year floodplain. Now, that's not a floodplain that is regulated through FEMA as far as minimum floor and pad elevations go from a federal standpoint, but we know that, just looking at this, that there are some known drainage concerns with this property. So with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions that the commission may have, and the applicant is present.
Mike, I've got a question for you. I mean, I see where the pockets fill up with water by the map there, but where's the flow away from this?
Southwest. I think it's got a meander through several parcels. Looks like there's some man-made excavations here, and then it kind of goes, keeps going south, oops, I got too many layers, keeps going to the southwest, finally, it'll get to the river. You know, it's got a jump fence rows and, and, right, and then go, keeps, keeps going to the southwest till it gets to the river. But yes, any, any plan that we would see, they would have to do a detailed downstream evaluation, volume evaluation, any kind of drainage, so knowing this is an area of concern, we would request that they look at this very thoroughly.
Doug, um, virtual in this area, spot zoning?
Well, again, when we talk about spot zoning, I mean, there's a lot of factors that go into that. Most of the time, what I try to do when I look at a rezoning application, I look at it as consistent or not consistent with the comprehensive plan. Again, there are factors involved in this that would indicate that commercial uses are a possibility along West Jefferson Pike. West Jefferson Pike is identified as an urban corridor in the comprehensive plan, which does contemplate mixed uses, commercial uses. It's also within the suburban belt character area, which also has densities for non-commercial, I'm sorry, non-residential development. So I think commercial-type uses are contemplated in this area. The fact that it is adjacent to non-residentially-zoned property, I think also lends credence to the case that you really couldn't call this spot zoning. Now, I'm not an attorney, nor am I a judge, a judge would have to make that final determination. I think what I'm trying to say is, while I may not be convinced it's spot zoning, I think there are other issues involved, which is why we didn't give it a positive recommendation. We know that, we know that there's other issues to deal with.
Doug, did you also say there's no current plan for property?
For the widening you're talking about, or, oh, you mean for the actual property itself? Yeah, they didn't, when they submitted their application, there was no specific uses mentioned, there was no concept plan. Now, the applicant is here and may go into some more detail as far as what they're, what they're thinking as far as development of the property, but when I wrote this report, based on the information presented to me, there wasn't any concrete use or any concrete concept plan given to me.
Doug, for the audience and, and to review us too, you might give us a short list, what's allowed in this, in this...
Yes, sir. Yeah, for our commercial, we have three different commercial zones, what I would call this our traditional commercial zones. We've got commercial neighborhood, we've got commercial services, and we've got commercial general. Commercial neighborhood is the most restrictive, commercial general is the most permissive, so commercial services kind of falls in the middle. The big difference between, say, a commercial neighborhood and a commercial services zone is the scale and the intensity of the uses that are allowed. For instance, in commercial neighborhood, you can have retail uses, but they can only be up to 5,000 square feet. Commercial services doesn't have that. Commercial general is going to allow some more of your heavier uses, like auto dealerships, things like that, whereas commercial services doesn't allow those type of uses, but it would allow for retail uses, it would allow for a convenience station, gas station, would allow for a variety of office-type uses, things like that. It's, it's not a wide-open zone, its intent is not to have like the heavier truck-traffic type uses involved, but it, it does allow quite a bit of, of different commercial uses, especially from a retail standpoint.
Doug, I'm not 100% sure that this is accurate, but that lot across Powell's Chapel Road, I think it's number 253, came before this commission a number of years ago. Craig, you remember that? You might remember it too, Mike, and I believe that lot is still vacant there, and I think they were wanting to put some type of a, a mini-market or something like that.
Well, the, the last, well, yeah, that, that was on, I think that was on the other side of the road, I know what you're talking about, Mike, I think that was on the other side of the road. We have seen a subdivision on this property. It's actually part of Chapel Hills, I believe it's called Section 9, if I remember right. That was recorded, I'd say, probably within the last year, so whatever uses may have been contemplated for it at the time, it's just gonna be for residential use now. It was one of the planted lots in that subdivision.
I think if I can remember right, there was a lot of opposition to that, and it's a really low area, especially down toward the road, and, and held water a lot, and, and I think this commission, whatever they wanted to put on there, from a commercial perspective, it was not allowed or disapproved. I'm kind of wondering if this particular lot should not really undergo some of that same scrutiny as it relates to the, the water concerns, you know, I'm, I'm, I, I don't know how, if we'll ever have another 2010 in our lifetimes, but, but just looking at the magnitude of that water really bothers me, and, and I know that if it is approved, there'd have to be a significant amount of work done before they would be allowed, and a plan presented before they'd be allowed to build on it. So, this area has been dealt with before, and one of the main concerns I think that this commission had back in those days dealt with, especially that lower end of that lot, where they really wanted to build, if I'm not mistaken, it was some, some kind of a gas station market in that area, and, and it was not, it was not approved for that. So we've kind of dealt with this, almost this exact area before, but it's been a number of years. Any other questions for staff? Ready for our public hearing? At this time, I'll declare the public hearing open for item 18-A004, Virginia Diane McCord. And is the applicant available? If you would, come forward, please. Good evening. You, you kind of know the drill, kind of?
Sir, thank you, Chairman Phil. Commissioners, my name is Clyde Ransfield, Huggins Steel Engineering, thank you for the opportunity to kind of present our request, and all the points have been brought up, we've, we've taken some tertiary looks at some of the concerns, so let's just kind of walk through potential uses. Right now, the, the commercial service request is really giving us some flexibility. My client owns this piece of property, and, and really, part of her desire is to possibly have some kind of convenience store-ish kind of product, or possibly a childcare, something that would really service the local neighbors. Right now, where that piece of property is located, it's really equidistant between the 840 interchange and the 231 interchange, so that's part of our motivation to try to provide something in, in, in the lines of commercial services that would kind of take away some of the pressure that both those interchanges are feeling. 231, at this location, where Jefferson Pike comes through, is a very crowded, congested area. I think a lot of the neighbors and concerns they'll have is over traffic, and by providing something more localized, we feel like it could be a viable business opportunity for somebody, and so that's, that's the reason for the location. With cut, cut-off road being what it is, and being a major cut-through, actually, we know there's a lot of traffic at this particular interchange that would support some sort of commercial business, so that's what the recommendation was, to go with some type of commercial service. As far as the actual lot is concerned, we went with about a three-acre tract, because that would support various types of businesses of the 20 acres that's available, and knowing full well that there's gonna be some fill that'll be necessary on that particular corner to make it work. If you notice... If you notice across the street, that house, that house across the street that doesn't flood, it has probably about four more feet of fill than where our site is, so we know full well that if it is to pass and begin, give us a zoning opportunity, when site plan comes around, there's going to be quite a bit of grading that will have to be addressed. My client was out there yesterday in the event of the weekend rain event. There was a little standing water out there as of yesterday, so there has been some mitigation that's already happened since 2010. Not exactly where that happened, but a lot of the flooding concerns that were in the 2010 flood are currently not as readily expressed on that piece of property as shown on those photos. So with that in mind, just want to let you know, I'm here for any questions you may have. The intent is to create some sort of a localized community service type of market, or a childcare center that could provide for all the local community with the event that we're kind of breaking the distance that folks would have to travel to get to 231 or 840 in order to get some sort of services, again, some localized services. So with that in mind, if you have any questions, I'm available for you, and I'd love to comment, Chairman, afterwards, after the public hearing, to comment on anything I can related to this particular project.
Stay available.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone here wishing to speak for or against this rezoning request, please come forward. If you would, state your name and address, please.
My name is Walter Smitty. I live at 2573 Jefferson Pike, West Jefferson Pike, directly across the street from the land in question. If you look at the map here during the flood, that's probably four to five days after the water, excuse me, after the water started receding. My house is the one in, right there in the middle, yes, sir. It was, we was actually on a moat. We had to, it was knee-deep going out either way, back when it happened. So, but just a couple of things I want to, I want to, I got questions for, but I wanted to mention up here. You mentioned a convenience store. We have a Mona Market about, I think you said, about a mile up. That's, we've gone through probably five owners in the 10 years that we lived there, because everything keeps failing. Nobody stops in. It's, we've had several different trials, a convenience store, barbecue, nothing seems to work. The childcare, we have, there's a childcare down both ends that I'm sure, I mean, it may be a good place for it, but the, there's a lot of traffic in this area, a lot of traffic. As that one picture you had mentioned, that was an example of a wreck that was out there. Actually, me and my son was out there helping clean up during that, but we've lived there probably 12 years, and we've seen six good wrecks. We've seen two that actually knocked a pole down in my front yard there. I have a prime example, I have a mailbox my dad built back in mid-'60s that's still, I refinished it. I was going to put it out front, and after the second wreck, I put it back in my garage where it should be. So, but there is a lot of traffic in that area, and I don't know if it would be safe to put anything there, other than maybe a caution light. So, but for now, that's all I, that's all I have.
Thank you.
Chairman, Board, ladies and gentlemen, I appreciate the time. I'm Joe Medlin. I live at 2645, right next door, just to the west of Walter that just spoke diagonally across from the property, and I took a vast number of these iPhone-type photos that you see here. Just a couple of comments. I, too, have done a little bit of tertiary research on this, certainly would like to do a more extensive study, but I would contend that this is a residential neighborhood, and as the gentlelady said earlier, she would not want a commercial property running through her neighborhood. We feel the same way. This is an area where we've lived for two and a half years. We had no knowledge of any kind of commercial area or application of such, other than at the 840 area intersection, and of course, at the 231. I would correct Walter, in one sense, that there was a daycare on either end of that, those two data points, but one at 231 has since failed. There is the store that Walter mentioned, it's gone through a series just in the past two and a half years that we've occupied the house there at 2645, and none of those are sustainable. There are gas stations, of course, back even further at the intersection, but there's one intermediate, as Doug mentioned, about a mile and a half to the east of our property and of this particular area. This is a residential area. I would strongly appeal to you to keep it that way. I would not, even though Doug and I are good friends, I would respectfully disagree that even though this is an institutional area with Wilson Elementary, which is a great attribute of our neighborhood that we're very proud of, that I would not akin or equate a gas station, convenience store, or some other type of automotive-type repair facility to be consonant with that type of a institutional property. The traffic is horrific. I usually leave there at 6:00 in the mornings. I'm heading west toward Nashville, and I can rarely get out of my neighborhood after, until I wait a couple of minutes and have 20 or 30, perhaps even more, cars go by before I can get in. These photos that you saw earlier were a large number. This was just one particular day. This is a routine occurrence. We have a lot of noise, we have a lot of traffic. We do have, as Walter said, a number of wrecks. I was picking up trash just a couple days prior to taking these photos, and a car went not a full 90 degrees, but went a good 30 degrees sideways to stop as a car had started to turn onto the cut-off road area. I was heading eastbound and almost had a collision that was going to be of horrific proportions. The sheriff's department is also very concerned about this area. They actually came and did a study. They used a speed sensor detection device on our property. They noted people that were driving in excess of 60 and even 80 miles an hour on occasion on this straight section of the road. I would strongly contend that the commercial areas of this road are better suited at the 840 and at the 231 intersections, rather than here in the midpoint of our residential area. The flooding, as you can see, I took these pictures Saturday morning, the course the rains kept coming and the floods kept coming. This does not show, to me, a measurable amount of abatement in any way, nor does it show the flooding that actually has run off across Jefferson Pike and onto Walter's property as well as to my own because of this. And if we turn that into a parking lot, we're going to have even more horrific flooding and issues in that particular area. Visibility is also another key concern of mine, and it's more to the west of the property, just right at my, actually driveway, and my mailbox is just at the far western corner of my lot, but there's a blind hill, there's a number of blind hills and curves, but right, kind of right in this area we're talking about is just kind of an NHRA drag strip. Cars get out there, and I'd say we probably could pick up enough rubber to rebuild several racing tires just from that, you know, one couple of days of effort there. So I understand this is an urban corridor. I understand that growth needs to happen. I would strongly prefer and request that you reconsider this zoning, and if we're going to make anything, I'd rather it be residential that's consonant with the type of neighborhood that we have. We're proud of our area, and we don't really want it to run down. I cannot quantify for you, but I would submit that it would have a deleterious effect to the property values if we have a gas station and the lights shining and crime and whatever else. You may not want to hear those qualitative complaints, and I apologize. If I can quantify them, I will plan to do so prior to the next meeting, but I do not think these are things that we would want, nor do I think any of you fair commissioners would want to have a gas station diagonal from your house. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Yes, we're Richard and Kimberly Lane, 105 Limerick Street. We can actually see the corner from our property if you go down Powell's Chapel. Limerick is the first.
You would adjust that microphone.
Sorry.
There you go.
Do I need to start over?
No.
Okay. If you turn onto Powell's Chapel, we are the first, right on the corner, the first street that you come to on the left. We agree wholeheartedly with the gentleman that just spoke. Concerns are property value. Traffic is horrendous. There's sirens out that way all the time for accidents. Mornings and afternoons, it's awful, and then the rest of the time, it's just constant traffic. So putting something like that there is just going to make things worse, in our opinion. And I agree with him on having a gas station. That's a little scary to have something like that that close to our property. Flooding, it floods awful, and I know y'all were saying there wasn't much, whoever the owner is, said there wasn't much flooding there this past rain. There was a lot. If you were there on a day-to-day basis as it was raining, there was a lot of flooding. So we would, we definitely would recommend, too, that this not be approved for commercial. Thank you.
Speaking's not really my thing, but I've lived in there for my grandparents owned everything that's built around, and I've never opposed anything, and y'all just moved there two years ago, the same traffic, the same everything was there when you moved in. And the property that you were saying that was flooded was not, but on the right side of the road was holding water. Used to, back in the '80s, there was no Angie Drive or Roanoke, and so you couldn't get through, and it did used to flood really, really bad. But after the 2011 or 2010 flood, they, FEMA redone it, and I guess, I don't know if they built the road up or whatever, but it does not flood like it does. I'm in agreement with the gas station. I'm not real hip on that either, but I do think it would be cool to have a childcare. But anyway, I've never opposed all the homes being built around me, and I don't bother anybody, and I would just appreciate if we could have it commercialized, if that's what we choose to do. So, thank you.
If you would, would you state your name for the record, please?
Diane McCord, Wilson, Diane McCord.
Hi, I'm Deborah Knox, and I live at 2501 West Jefferson Pike, right next door to Walter and Barb. And, you know, the issue with the watershed in the area is a significant issue. I have three horses on my property. And in the 2010 flood, I actually, my niece actually had to go out to the back of the property, the high spot of the property, and walk them through chest-deep water to get them to safety. And that was in the 2010 flood, granted. Now, not this past weekend, but the, where we had some flash flooding a couple of months ago back in the late fall. And Rutherford County schools were closed because of the flash flooding, et cetera. Those flood-control ponds, as I call them, that you see on the properties, the one that is on my property, it probably had 10 feet of water in it, and that was just an overnight flash flood. The property cannot stand any more watershed coming through it, or I'm not going to have any more pasture, I'm going to end up having drowned horses. So if there's anything to be built across the road there, the water issue has got to be dealt with. The traffic issue has got to be dealt with. Like Walter, and like, I've never met you before, welcome to the neighborhood, it takes five minutes to get out of there in the morning, especially when school is in session. So there has got to be traffic issues dealt with. There has got to be the watershed issues dealt with, and we all are concerned, because we do live in that rural area. We like being able to see the stars at night. So the light pollution has got to be dealt with, and noise has got to be dealt with. Thank you.
The question of water and water control and water flow has been addressed countless times over the last few years, and I'm not saying that lightly. Countless times, when we've had a rezoning request and neighbors have come in concerned about water. What I'm going to ask Mike to do is to tell you the position that the county would be under to address those water issues. Mike, would you kind of go through the?
Sure. Any plan that we look at, we have the design engineer look at what water is leaving the site before the development and what water is leaving the site after the development, the impact. How is it impacting the neighbors? What can they do to mitigate that to mimic pre-development runoff? So that's something that would need to be looked at very carefully here because of the, the volume-sensitive area with the depressions, the, the lack of a direct route to a creek or a stream. This has to, you know, do some hopscotch through some fence rows, across driveways, and then finally get to the river. It, you know, once it gets past this area that's been excavated out to help lower the water in rain events, I assume that's what happened here. These don't look like a natural excavations or, you know, landforms. This looks like this was dug out over time to help lower the water elevations in these farms. So any impact on this development, we would have to closely look at what happens to the adjacent properties, you know? With this being a volume-sensitive area, they might have to overexcavate, they might have to get some drainage easements across several properties, do some improvements downstream. So any development here would have to be closely evaluated.
Mike, that's going to be true, what you're saying is going to be true then for residential or?
Right. Any development we look at, residential, single-family, commercial, anything industrial, they have to thoroughly look at what's happening to the land now, what happens after this development, and how can we mitigate that.
Answer this as delicately as you want to, but is three acres enough to have a retention pond, have a soil site, and have a viable business?
I would, I would have to look at a design, but I'm thinking three acres is probably not enough. I mean, because you've got to have a primary and a secondary backup area for your soils, your septic system. You've got to have enough area to mitigate the increase in purgus area, so I'd say it'd be tough. It'd be challenging, and put a footprint for parking a building, it would be a challenge. I'm not saying it can't be done, but I'm saying it'd be challenging.
Just to follow up on that, since there's so much concern about water issues out there, and I would understand, if I lived in one of those three houses where you folks just spoke, I would have those same concerns, but from our perspective, all of those water concerns, if this is approved for commercial development, no building, site would be allowed without thorough review from our engineering department to determine that no water issues would be, additional water issues would be created by that construction site. The engineering firm, as part of our guidelines and procedures, would have to present a detailed plan, and it would have to be approved by us. And I'm not saying anything other than water is something that this commission has developed a tremendous amount of experience with over the last 25 to 30 years, and I think it's done a really good job. I've been on this commission for 20- I've been on this commission for 24 years and 20 years ago, we had tremendous flood issues and I'm talking about homes that were underwater. You don't see that like you did 20, 25 years ago and, and so this commission, through the planning staff and department, has done, I think, a wonderful job in being able to mitigate some of our issues that we've had countywide. Those issues would be addressed, whether it's a commercial development or residential development. Anyone else wishing to speak?
Thanks, Chairman Phillips. Based on the concerns that we've heard tonight, we'd like to ask, we just defer this to more information. We can provide some kind of a concept plan that will help us kind of maximize the acreage that we need in order to make sure drainage is adequately handled. I have, in my experience, you know, sometimes when development happens, sometimes you can alleviate drainage concerns because now you can address them. So we feel like there may be some solutions. The acre is, there's 20 acres available for potential development, so there'll be ways to kind of handle the water volume, creating retention ponds, those kind of things. But because of the question marks about the sheer volume of water, we'd like to go ahead and go back to the board and make sure that we have the right amount of land that we're looking at in order to, to create a potential commercial development. And then, and really, we're going to listen to the neighbors' concerns about how that traffic could work and light pollution, those kind of things. Obviously, those will be dealt with in the site plan stage as well. But with that in mind, if that, if that'd be okay, we'd love to defer this to later for more information. Thank you.
I think the applicant has the right to withdraw the request. Is that what you're asking?
For now. Chairman?
And if I would, and just to kind of follow up with what you were saying, Clyde, I, I know that there were some questions about the uses as well and Ms. McCourt, I know you even said you weren't that thrilled with the idea of a mini-market gas station-type building. You might want to look at possible uses, maybe what other, maybe a lighter zone possibly. I mean, just all options on the table as far as that goes. So just look at that as well.
Be great, Doug.
And I will let the audience know, those who are here, those who may be watching on TV, this, because they're taking it off the agenda, this won't go forward to the Board of Commissioners next month and whenever this does come back for a planning commission, we'll do the same notification that we did the last time, be a letter assigned on the property and everything. So you'll be notified again of another meeting before the planning commission, whenever that may be.
Doug, I want to say something and to the applicant, I appreciate something she said. She said she never had opposed anything and when the John Short Jordan, I believe, who owned that property across the road when it was developed, there are a couple of those houses, and I'm certainly not accusing the people living in them now, that was done probably back in the 80s, but they're elevated up above that and that area did haul water then, but I'm not sure some of that elevation that was added around those houses didn't pond some of this water on her. So it's a very complicated thing we're looking at here and I have some appreciation for what she said.
I will say too, just to kind of add on to that, a lot of the developments you see around there is residential, under the older zoning ordinance, probably R-15. Most of those developments would have been by right anyway. There wouldn't have been rezoning applications like we're seeing for this, so just, you know, for full disclosure, if nothing else.
Item 18-A004 has been withdrawn. Those of you that were here and spoke at the public hearing, this commission appreciates you being here and appreciates your input. It is meaningful to this commission for you to be here and to give us your concerns and ideas and it weighs on this commission when people take interest in the process. Thank you for being here. Item 6C318-5001, amendments to our zoning ordinance concerning temporary uses. Doug?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. This is something we've discussed with the planning commission a couple of different times. This deals with temporary uses, more, I would say, not specifically for the firework tents, but primarily for them because we see more of them than we see anything. We discussed in the past, both with the planning commission and the Board of Zoning Appeals, the possibility of allowing administrative renewals of seasonal firework sales tents, temporary sales of food or merchandise and seasonal attractions. This really came, the idea came to us from a discussion I was having with one of Murphish Borough City's planners. They recently started doing this within the last couple of years. Essentially, it just takes a little bit of the load off of the Board of Zoning Appeals for those applications that they see over and over again, over the years. And a lot of the firework tents that we see, we may see a new one every couple of years, but most of the ones that we see are same applicant, same location, same tent, same hours of operation, everything is, is identical. So what we've asked of the Board of Zoning Appeals and the Planning Commission and got a favorable response for, we're moving forward with now making some amendments to the zoning ordinance regarding these uses. Essentially, we would allow those renewals of special exceptions for sales of food or merchandise, attractions, firework tents, those kind of things, if they met certain criteria. Mainly, you know, if they'd been approved within the last 12 months for the same location, the current application for the special exception to have the same applicant name, same property as far as tax map and parcel. The tent, sales yard, other facility shall be placed in the same location. Everything about it's pretty much identical. Nothing has changed as far as the zoning district or bulk regulations are concerned, length with, height dimensions of the tent, everything, again, the same. With that, if there were any sites that we receive complaints about, or you can see built into the regulations, had received any sort of citation, written warning, fine, anything like that, and we can coordinate with our legal entities with that as well, we could just say, no, you're going to have to go back to the Board of Zoning Appeals. So we're not saying they can't do it, just they can't go through the renewal process. So I think these amendments will be well-received. I know they'll be well-received by the Board of Zoning Appeals because this will take probably about 10 to 12 applications a year at least off of their dockets that they have right now and still allow us the opportunity to make the analysis to make sure everything is still good within before giving them approval to go forward. So we do need to have a public hearing on this since this is a change to the zoning ordinance and will require Board of Commissioner action as well, but with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions that anybody may have.
Doug, if you had exactly the same tent and exactly the same location, but you had the guy said, "I don't want to do it anymore, but my neighbor wants to do it," what would be your procedure then?
Well, if it's a different applicant, they would have to go through, back to the Board of Zoning Appeals because on number A on the back, it's the last page on your agenda packets, current application for a special exception shall have the same applicant name as the previously granted special exception. So if it changes names, you know, if, if like you said, if one gentleman does it or one person does it and they give it to another person unrelated, then at that point, yeah, they would have to go back through the process. Now, if they kept the tent for a year and then everything was fine, then the next year they could probably go through the renewal process, provided nothing, you know, no complaints or anything, no issues arose that we felt needed to be dealt with.
Ready for a public hearing? At this point, I'll declare a public hearing open for 18-5001, which concern amendments to our zoning ordinance. Anyone here wishing to speak? Seeing there's a couple of regulars out in the audience that doesn't wish to speak, I'll declare the public hearing closed. Commissioners? We have a motion and a second to approve the amendments to our zoning ordinance, item 18-5001. All who's in favor of that motion to approve, please say aye. Is there any opposition? Motion to approve carries and this will go to the county commission on Thursday, March the 15th. For some reason, it says, "It feels good to say March." Any other reports?
I don't have anything. Do you?
Your business?
No, sir.
Our next meeting is scheduled for Monday, the 26th of February, 9:00 a.m. in the planning mess. And for those of you who are like me that have a domestic challenge when it comes to dates, Wednesday is Valentine's Day. Wash your face, brush your teeth, polish your shoes, grab your significant other, tell them how much they mean to you and how much you love them. Do, buy them a card on the way home so you don't forget. We're adjourned.